This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits to my left and to my right. Please speak into the microphones if you come up to speak, and assistive listening devices are available. Tina, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? You have a good seat.
(inaudible)
Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim?
Here.
Councilwoman Walchovitz?
Here.
Or Attorney?
Here.
Or Administrator?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held August 8th, 2017, and September 5th, 2017, as distributed?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, please note my abstention on September 5th, 2017.
Thank you. All right, council reports. I’m going to start on my left with Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Starting off, we’re starting off on a sad note. We lost our firefighter, John Burns, who’s been with the borough for almost over 30 years as a firefighter. We lost him last week, and with that, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Speaking of fire, this week is Fire Prevention Week, and tomorrow night at our firehouse, we will be having open house from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30. And everyone is welcome to come down to the firehouse and look at the shiny new engines and everything else like that, but most importantly is for us to learn about what to do in case there is a fire and how to keep everyone safe. I know the firefighters have been going through the schools and teaching kids about fire prevention, giving out hats and keeping them drop and roll and how to keep everyone safe should there be a fire. So please take a moment tomorrow night, stop down to our firehouse right across the street from here, and learn what to do in case there is a fire. And also keep in mind that daylight saving time is fast approaching, and we need to change the, our carbon dioxide detectors in our home and our fire alarms. So it’s, this month is making sure that everyone stays safe. So please, come down tomorrow, take a look at what they, that’s at the firehouse, what’s being offered. And that’s my report.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
I have no report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Kim?
Yes, Mayor. We have another flu shot clinic available to the residents that were not able to make the previous clinics. Next flu shot clinic will be held Tuesday, October 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Today, we had our Fall Senior Luncheon with a dance demo by the author Murray Dan Studio. On Tuesday, October 24th, we will be taking a trip to Petler’s Village in Pennsylvania. This trip is open to all, but spaces are limited. Please contact the center for more details. On Tuesday, October 31st, we will be having a Halloween party and costume contest at the senior center at 12:30 p.m. Refreshments will be provided, and please call the senior center to sign up. We also have a new program for our seniors. It is a senior art class, Painting with Flowers. It’s taking place every Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. And senior, and a senior walking group that meets every Monday at 11:00 a.m. Please stop by or call the center for more details. For the Arts Commission, we held our poetry and spoken word concert on Friday, October 13th, and had 35 attendees, mostly from Highland Park. Seven poets were featured and six were Highland Park residents. It was a very successful evening. The Band-Aid sculpture applications are in, and the jury is currently reviewing them. The book arts, the book arts workshop is halfway full with reservations for November 2nd, and it will be held at the Highland Park Public Library. And you can visit our Highland Park Arts Commission Facebook page for more details. Our improv workshop has a few people signed up on November 7th at the senior center. So if you’re interested in that, we still have a few spots. Our next concert will be Sunday, November 18th, at 7:30 p.m., featuring the Highland Park Jazz Ensemble. The Highland Park Arts Commission submitted a article to the HP News about our plans for 2018, which includes several workshops and arts projects for the public, including concerts and arts, art exhibits. We have a lot of things planned for 2018. We are working with the New Brunswick Arts Council on their Windows of Understanding exhibit, which will be placed, which will be placed themed works in the storefront windows of local businesses. The theme is “We See Through Hate,” and we plan to enlist artists and store owners to participate along Raritan River. The dates of the project are Martin Luther King birthday through the end of February for Black History Month. I had the pleasure to meet with LJ Smith, Highland Park native and former Titan for the Philadelphia Eagles. He is very interested in collaborating with our Highland Park Recreation Department on programming. I’m looking forward to working with him. I attended the City of Bayonne Youth Challenge as a spectator. The children had the opportunity to conquer an urban obstacle course where they felt a great sense of accomplishment as they crossed the finish line. The course included everything from police cars to jump over 20, 20 feet cargo net to water jug carrying. All finishers received a medal, shirt, and serious bragging rights. The president of the city challenge, the city challenge, Elvin Guzman, will attend our next Recreation Advisory Committee meeting to see if this is something we want to add to our agenda for 2018. Our Highland, our Halloween party will, will be on Sunday, October 29th, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Highland Park High School Gym. We will have a DJ, bounce house crafts, refreshments, and Halloween safety tips, and a costume parade with prizes and giveaways. And that’s my report.
Thank you. By the way, Stephanie, I’ve gotten a couple of emails from residents who were at the spoken word event that the Arts Commission had, and they were raving about it. They were hoping it happens again, so you may want to share that with your Arts Commission.
Yes, 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 we have it down.
Okay. Councilman George, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First, with regard to the Environmental Commission and our Native Plant Reserve volunteers and our Highland Park Meadows Trail volunteers, we did have the workday on Sunday at the Environmental Center removing the wisteria. I’d like to thank Steve Barnes, who’s our, our trail manager, Sam Craig and Tom, who showed up alone with myself, and we worked in the rain for about three and a half hours pulling out the invasives. They’re lying behind, we were trying to gather them up, we pulled them all out. It was unbelievably hard work, and the, these people working, and then Mary Denver and her volunteers showing up later, really got quite a lot of the invasive species that were killing that one tree directly behind the environmental center and pulling out the taproots. It was tough, hard, dirty, wet work, and we had a lot of fun. I did bring coffee and donuts, Councilman Hirsch, but you didn’t show up for them, as you said you would.
Right, yeah, we, that was difficult.
With regard to the Environmental Commission, our meeting was October 4th. We reviewed our current matters that were in charge of environmental, including the PSENG solar farm, which is still pending before DEP at PSENG has been making some modifications to the plan. The Beehive Fence is on the agenda for tonight, so that’s moving along as well. With regard to the Shade Tree Commission, that met on Thursday, they are, have been supervising and working with the DPW on the fall planting. They are now, we’re working on the shopping list for the tree species replacement for 2018, to have it early, a presentation early for the budget and to get the project rolling earlier this year. In addition, two of our members, Carolyn Karen, are attending the State Shade Tree Federation training. With regard to DEP, things are moving along. We’re still shorthanded, but the crews are working hard. Take note that leaf gathering season will be coming along soon. The bags are available down at the, at the DEP off Valentine at the bottom of Fifth, so please pick the bags up. Keep in mind that we will start picking them up, the pickups will start and run through the end of the year very shortly. Grand Avenue is slowly being paved, and I mean slowly being paved. At my meeting this morning, I asked why it was so slow, and it’s just a lot of conditions they didn’t anticipate to get the job done correctly. Traffic can still flow, but it is a slow job, but it’s one of our last paving jobs, and thanks to the mayor and PSENG delightfully agreeing with her, we got a lot of roads paved this year in addition to PSENG replacing. I’d like to just jump on what Councilwoman Kim talked about with the, with the arts in town. There is also an loosely formed organization, the Arts Collective, which is the artists themselves. We had an art salon at my house on the 8th, about 35 people. They all raved about the programs, and they feel that it’s revitalizing and rejuvenating in Highland Park. There is an exhibit of the Collective at the library through the end of the month. It’s called “Our Best Stuff.” Everybody brought something representative of their work. Everybody’s very enthusiastic. As to Sustainable Highland Park, I’ll defer to the Chair, Ms. Westhouse, who is going to present on the Plastic Bag Reduction Program and the step, the way that program is moving along quite very well in Highland Park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, briefly, thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. The Human Relations Commission will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, October 17th, 7:00 p.m. at the downstairs conference room here at 221, at Borough Hall. The address over there is 221 South Sixth. The Board of Health will meet Thursday, October 19th, 7:00 p.m. in the downstairs conference room here at Borough Hall. Just to piggyback off of, we talked about the Highland Park News, the Board of Health also submitted an article for publication in the Highland Park News, and the title is “Beyond Flu Shots: Vaccinations for Adult,” for adults. And I’m going to read you the lead. “The fact is, you owe it to yourself and everyone around you to consider it. It is not, it is estimated that vaccination inverted 1,800 deaths in the 2012-2013 flu season alone, and it’s not too late to get your flu vaccine for the upcoming season.” That’s just a teaser, that’s what they call clickbait, clickbait, online, so there’s a lot more useful information, and it is really important to get vaccinated, and you heard Councilwoman Kim announce the service here in town. Just, I reported at the last meeting, but I will be on a panel, on a conference hosted by the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey this Friday, October 20th, at the Pines Manor in Edison, I’m sorry, at the, at the Hyatt in New Brunswick. The, the, this is, this is a panel on the Rental Assistance Demonstration and finding the right partner for HUD’s Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. And basically, what I’m going to be talking about on the panel, my, my part is talking about Highland Park’s role in converting our public housing, a piece of our public housing stock into HUD’s Rental Assistance Demonstration and finding the right investor to help do necessary capital improvements, monies that were not available to us through HUD, and monies that were not, and money that we just couldn’t absorb the debt for. So it should be a good program if you’re interested in housing and community development. I would strongly suggest that you come out for that. And then just finally, I am ecstatic to report that after nearly a year, 364 days after passing our ordinance, November 1st, 2016, that we are ready to launch the Highland Park Municipal ID Program. Stay tuned for more details, but cards will be issued Tuesdays and Thursdays, Tuesday, Tuesday afternoons, tentatively 3:00 p.m. to 5:30, Thursday mornings, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. here at Borough Hall. The card’s available to all residents, 14 and over. It’s $15 for adults, $7 for seniors, veterans, and children. Residents may request a hardship waiver. And, you know, just a little context, because Highland Park prides itself in being an inclusive community where no resident should live in the margins, it’s critical for the borough to provide access for all residents to its municipal agencies. The Highland Park Municipal ID is not accepted outside of the jurisdiction of Highland Park, unless that jurisdiction accepts it, but it’s certainly not within our purview. And in addition to municipal agencies, the borough will continue to work with various town stakeholders to provide incentives related to the ID. Currently, several businesses have agreed to provide discounts or other special, or other specials upon presentation. Again, stay tuned for that. This is a soft launch. The program will, will develop more fully over time, but what we want to do is really, you know, the, the ID card, the intention is to bring everybody in from the margins and to make sure that everybody has access to municipal services. So we want this to be as mainstream as possible. So anybody watching, even if you have a driver’s license, there will be benefits related to municipal ID, and we encourage everybody to get one. And stay tuned for more information, there’ll be a lot more coming out on that. And that’s my report.
And if I could just add, many people don’t know your lengthy experience and background in the housing area, and our housing authority is lucky to have you as their council liaison.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council President, do you have a report today?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My deepest condolences to the Byrne family. The Byrne family are longtime dedicated Highland Park residents. I remember John and his siblings, as we both grew up in Highland Park. John is deeply missed by his family, friends, and classmates. On a lighter note, I’m delighted to announce that the Highland Park Borough and Redevelopment Agency have been awarded a $150,000 grant to pursue site remediation on some properties on the avenue. This funding is key in furthering Highland Park’s plans for downtown redevelopment. I’d like to thank Redevelopment Agency Chairwoman, Mrs. Rosie Baruch, and our Middlesex County Economic Development Representative, Denise Nickel, for their hard work and continued support during the application and now implementation processes. This is the first time in the history of Highland Park that we’ve earned grant monies to make such a bold move forward in the redevelopment of our downtown.
Nice work.
Thank you. A huge thanks to Pinos, Main Street, the musicians and local restaurants for making Sunday’s Taste of Highland Park and Harvest Festival a great annual tradition. Thanks to Siobhan and Steve Weinstein at Pinos, Rebecca Hirsch and the team at Main Street, to all the dad bands that performed, and to Park Deli, Aposto, Sushianna, and Will’s Vegan Burgers. Everyone had a great time. Don’t forget our upcoming Halloween on the avenue. Enjoy downtown trick-or-treating at participating Raritan Avenue businesses on Tuesday, October 31, from 2:30 till 5:00. I had the opportunity to take my family to a very special event a couple weekends ago. Special thanks to Middlesex County Freeholders and Office of Arts and History for organizing a new destination event at the beautifully restored East Jersey Old Town Village. On October 7th and 8th, scores of oral historians from throughout New Jersey and nearby states brought a Revolutionary War encampment to life. Many soldiers even camped in tents overnight. Villagers talked about their basic lifestyle, economic and political issues of the time. Craftspeople and artisans provided demonstrations, and the soldiers reenacted a battle with authentic replica muskets, bayonets, and even a British cannon. It was an amazing historical and family event that most people would travel hours to see, and here it was, right in our backyard. Special thanks to Matthew Stroh at East Jersey Old Town, Scott Barone, commander of the 3rd New Jersey Regiment Continental Army, and Mr. Ackerman, the stalker or gunmaker, who made most of the replicas used that day by hand, and the many other oral historians who generously shared the weekend, educating us about our local Revolutionary War history. We can’t wait for their return next year. You can find out more about the oral historians at www.jerseyblues.org, or about more events at East Jersey Old Town at middlesexcountyandjade.gov. East Jersey Old Town is open Tuesday through Friday, 8:34, and Sundays from 1:00 to 4:00. It’s really worth it. On October 11th, I joined our Mayor, Gail Brill-Mittler, and Mayor Cahill of New Brunswick, and Mayor Cohen from East Brunswick at Women Aware, celebrating survivors of domestic abuse, a candlelight vigil. It was a moving event sponsored by this important national nonprofit group which has local presence here. Women Aware bring awareness to domestic abuse as well as bringing services to victims. The event was hosted by Executive Director Phyllis Adams with the engaging keynote speaker Tammy Murphy, who has been deeply involved with the issue, having developed her own nonprofit, 180 Degrees, to help the same population. Main Street Board meets this Wednesday, October 18th, at 6:30 at the senior center. The Planning Board meets this Thursday, October 19th, at 7:30 here in Borough Hall. And since we won’t see you until after Election Day, just a reminder, if you haven’t already done so, you can register to vote, and register to vote by mail by visiting our Borough Clerk’s Office during normal office hours and simply completing a form. Thank you very much.
So just, yeah, today was the deadline. But, but now that you’ve registered, please go out and vote on November 7th. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
It’s, it’s a reminder, and I say this resident to resident as well, just a reminder that the November 1st tax payment is coming up, and the only reason I flag it here today is I’ve come to learn we are on an accelerated schedule here, so we must get all of our taxes in by the end of this year, otherwise, if you, if you find yourself after November 2, the deadline is the first with a grace period of 10 days, but if you go as far out as the 20th, you could find yourself in a tax sale situation. So you really need to be aware of those deadlines at the end of the year. And our Tax Collections Office can answer all of your questions about that, but I’m saying that because I learned that as a new thing this year in this position. So just remember, November 1st.
So Borough Administrator, perhaps we can have our Communications Department.
I was thinking the same thing today when I was talking to Connie, yes.
Good, great, thank you.
Mayor, if I might request that you ask the Administrator, when you put that notice out, many of us who, who have our escrows and paid through the mortgage company make sure that people understand how that works with, because I would dare say probably most of us pay that way, and I think our residents would like a clarification on that, so they understand.
Yeah, that’s, that’s a very good point, thank you.
We don’t want people to double pay by accident.
Right.
Okay. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, just a couple of things. I too want to express my condolences to John Burns’ family. There were so many people who showed up for his funeral, so many fire people from across this area, police, family, and friends. We, we were very lucky and very honored to have him working with us here in Highland Park, and we will miss him. Just a couple of reminders. First of all, Park Partners, our Give Back Grant Program has kicked in. If you haven’t already picked up your application form, they are available at the Borough Hall, and you need to see Stacy Kaplan. I believe you may also be able to download it from the website. Our Mayor’s Wellness Campaign has been awarded, awarded some funding from the Etna Corporation through a local New Jersey health nonprofit based out of Princeton. Matt, Councilman Hirsch and I had the chance to meet with some of the people who are running the program, and they will be helping us fund programs that will bring awareness to chronic diseases, better healthy eating. Matt, I don’t know if you have anything you want to add to that?
No, it was just a very productive meeting, and the funding is there to do a lot of public health initiatives, I think, so we look forward to partnering with them on a number of initiatives and taking ideas that we have into, and making them into, into.
And one of the things that this will be funding is to have a six-course program on diabetes and how to treat it, how to avoid it, and how to maintain it. We also, I think I may have mentioned this once before, but it’s very exciting to me, we were one of 13 municipalities in the state to receive a grant from the BPU of $132,000 to do a feasibility study on a microgrid. The microgrid would be a, you can think of it as a giant generator that is run off the grid in case of an emergency. So our program, which is bright, being resilient in a temporary emergency, is going to be studied here. We kicked it off about a week ago, and you’ll soon be seeing a lot more information on microgrids. We can stop hopefully calling Highland Park Highland Dark. And lastly, perhaps as a lead-in, I want to thank Sustainable Highland Park for this tremendous program that they’ve started here in Highland Park, encouraging us to stop using plastic bags. And I’m going to open the public discussion session now, and I believe Tina Westhouse is coming up to talk about the program.
Should I go too?
Yes, please.
Okay, I have some show in town here. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting us. We’re about five months into a year-long campaign, which was started in town because our past chairperson of Sustainable Highland Park and others on the committee wrote a grant, which was funded by Sustainable Jersey and the PSENG, and it was a $10,000 grant to do outreach and education to voluntarily reduce the number of plastic bags in town, single-use plastic bags mostly distributed by the larger stores in town, and also to do research and look into ordinances and actions that can be taken through the council to do more than voluntary reduction. So I’m going to report on what we’ve done in the five months, and it’s been exciting. It has stimulated Sustainable Highland Park to grow and to do, really, I think, important outreach to the different sectors of town, in addition to work within the various boards and commissions and departments internally to the borough. So I want to thank the mayor and the council for being very supportive to Sustainable Highland Park. We are, of course, a borough commission, and so we are an extension of the council and the government, the local government, and we have gotten. to do more than voluntary reduction. So I'm going to report on what we've done in the five months, and it's been exciting. It has stimulated Sustainable Highland Park to grow and to do, really, I think, important outreach to the different sectors of town, in addition to work within the various boards and commissions and departments internally to the borough. So I want to thank the mayor and the council for being very supportive to Sustainable Highland Park. We are, of course, a borough commission, and so we are an extension of the council and the government, the local government, and we have gotten a lot of support. We've been working with Teri Hovair, who's our new administrator, and Stacy Kaplan and Monica Jackson to do the kind of publicity that the town can do for Sustainable Highland Park. It coincided, the grant coincided with Sustainable Highland Park getting up a website, which was, took a few years in happening, but now we have a site itself that people can go to, and we used it very successfully to do an online survey. The survey was also done in paper, but most of the responses came as a result of NICSAL emails, and we got hundreds of responses, and that's the basis of getting a sense of where the attitudes were before we did the education, trying to get that at the outset. If possible, measuring maybe at the end of the year, a kind of change in attitude because of the education, but at least getting the temperature of the town for various possibilities, including council action. So that was exciting. We got a subcommittee to Sustainable Highland Park, and the committee has, as I said, it's grown, but it's also been excited to work on this grant because we had been wanting to do something on plastic bag reduction for years, and it wasn't until we actually got the grant that we had the opportunity and the impetus, a little bit of money, more than a little bit, to begin to do the outreach and to do things like use a significant amount of the grant to give away. Everybody thinks, oh, how much are these? No, they're giveaways, but in this sense, they're not throwaways, they're giveaways so that people will be encouraged to use reusable bags. This one is a foldable tote, mostly for women or people who carry backpacks or pocketbooks, and this one is cotton, very sustainable, very reusable. And in the process, we made a logo, and we had the help of a summer intern, Colin Tomlinson, who was delightful and did a lot of... He did anything you asked him to do, which was very nice to have that kind of help on the committee. So, yeah, and we have everybody on the council and at the meeting tonight. So, since this is being recorded and it's an opportunity for me to speak to the town, I want to just start off with some facts about plastic, use it as an opportunity to do education. There are 5 trillion plastic bags, single-use plastic bags, consumed each year globally. One bag is used, on average, for 20 minutes before it is disposed of. It takes about 1,000 years for a plastic bag to decompose, and only about 1% of plastic bags are recycled. We have Stop &amp; Shop, who has a recycling bin in town, and people do use it, but 1% of millions of bags just in our town are recycled. So recycling is not the answer for this problem. 100 million barrels of oil are used each year to produce plastic bags worldwide, emitting 40 million metric tons of carbon dioxide into our atmosphere and contributing significantly to global warming or climate change. Most plastic bags end up in waterways, landfills, and littering our landscapes, and more than 1 million seabirds and 100,000 marine mammals are killed yearly by ocean debris, and also impacts human health in ways that we are beginning to be aware of and in ways that we do not know how it impacts, but I am sure that it will come out more and more over the years. So that's the reason to get rid of plastic bags, and we're clearly not alone in this effort. Countries around the world are doing it. In New Jersey itself, Teaneck and Longport are the two towns that now have ordinances. And states, California, other states are doing it, are looking into it, and there is legislation in the state, in New Jersey State Legislature, which was introduced in 2014 and has stalled. It is possible with the new administration, come November, by the time our grant ends, there will be, there may be some movement on that legislation at the state level, which would then be an interesting way for us to interact with whatever comes out of the state. But I just want to tell people what we've done so far. We have the different sectors of town, of course, the town itself, its governmental structure, and its boroughs and commissions. We're also collaborating with the schools, the businesses, and the faith community. In terms of working within the town, we've had some really outstanding collaborations, specifically working with the Food Pantry is a nice example. We translated our literature, which are the basic facts and reasons why people should think before asking for a plastic bag. We translated that into Chinese, Russian, Spanish, and the people who are English-speaking. So the literature went to the recipients of the Food Pantry so that they could understand it, and they all got two bags apiece, and they were told in their languages that if they didn't bring them, they weren't getting the food in plastic bags, and it has been incredibly successful. And it was just a really nice collaboration between the people at the Food Pantry and a nice example, I think, of working internally together to support each other's goals, since they had been troubled by the amount of plastic they were using for their recipients. We've also worked with the... I have to say, we've worked with HPTV very successfully, Gary. Leslie has taken the film that we've shown, Bag It, and he's put it on a regular basis on Highland Park TV, and we have been advertising it both on posters and on our website. So you can catch that film, which is our educational outreach film. Tonight, that film is showing at Irving School, okay? We've worked with the Senior Center, we went to the senior luncheon, we showed the movie to the seniors there, and, you know, many people were very interested. Wherever we go and we show the movie, we give out these bags. We were at National Night Out, it was a great event for us. At that point, we didn't have our own bags, but we had Stop &amp; Shop's bags, and they gave them to us very generously. We gave away hundreds, it was a very good night. We've worked with the library, they have been, they showed the movie, they have been, over the months, they had paper surveys, so we had people filling those surveys out and giving us a lot of feedback. We're working with the Arts Commission now on a possible arts project. We are talking to the Board of Health, we've consulted with the DPW, and we're doing as much outreach in paper and electronically as we can. There was a kickoff on June 30th that the mayor helped us organize at the farmer's market, and there we had the superintendent of schools, we had a representative from Green Faith, and we had Main Street, who we have worked with from the beginning. So in terms of businesses, we were down at the farmer's market, we surveyed the vendors there, we had a survey also for the businesses in addition to the residents. And at the schools, they are, they told me that they were making a separate survey for the students there. Stop &amp; Shop has been very, very cooperative. They have a very good corporate policy on plastic bag reduction. The problem is that it doesn't translate easily down to the individual cashiers, and people are always asking us, why don't the cashiers ask you if you want a plastic bag before they give it? Those carousels came in just before our grant was issued, and it's, can be frustrating, and that it will be an issue in terms of what the council decides, what our government decides to do at the end of the year.
Tina, I don't want to cut you off because you're doing such a fabulous job with this, but I need to limit this to 15 minutes.
Okay. It's not that much more. We are, we have worked with the schools, we met with, the superintendent gave us the go-ahead, and then we had contact with their green team. We met with every single principal, and the middle school and the high school have a copy of the movie Bag It, which they said they would be showing to their science classes. And we have, of course, high school representatives on the Sustainable Highland Park Commission. We went to all the back-to-school nights where we, in fact, had our bags, and we gave out lots of them. We, as I said, we surveyed the business community, and there are posters all over town. This is the logo, and you'll see them in store windows, and I grabbed this from the table in Borough Hall. We were, of course, at Arts in the Park, and we've been working with Main Street from the beginning, the faith community. We've been reaching out to various different houses of worship, and we hope to do more of that. And in terms of the future, we're looking, in the next few weeks, you will begin to see lawn signs that will be visual cues surrounding, we're going to put them in all the grassy areas around the main shopping centers. So they'll be at surrounding Stop &amp; Shop. Rite Aid has given us the okay, and if we can, if Quick Check doesn't approve on their property, it will be on the borough property, and we'll be talking to Main Street about the downtown. But the idea is that most people say that they have, they have plenty of reusable bags. The idea is to get them to use the reusable bags, so we're hoping that the visual cues, which say simply, "Remember your reusable bags" as you leave your car and go into shop, that that will increase the number of reusables that are, will reduce the number of plastic bags. So that is, and we're going to be doing tables at Stop &amp; Shop in October and the end of, into the holiday season, where we'll be giving out our bags, and at the point of shop, shopping, right, at the moment that they're shopping, that they'll be reminded that this is the moment to get your bag out and to refuse the plastic. So the only thing I want to say to kind of prepare the council is that I feel like we've done, and will continue to do throughout the year, a lot of education and a lot of outreach. But I go into Stop &amp; Shop nearly every day. There are 1.3 million plastic bags used, well, it was used in the year 2016, at our tiny supermarket, 1.3 million. And there are times of the day where you can see people using reusables a little bit more, but there are times of the day where you barely see a reusable come out of people's bags. So, I want you, as we are doing the research, to also think about the possibility of an ordinance, which is, we did survey people, we do have responses on that. There are different kinds of ordinances, some are bans, some are fees, some are combinations of that. But it seems to me that five months into a year-long project, that the way to get significant reduction is going to be legislating that, and that voluntary reduction will hopefully make a dent, and we'll be able to see that by Stop &amp; Shop's numbers at the end of the year. That will be our benchmark. But I think that in order to get any kind of real reduction and have a real impact, it may be that you're going to have to consider an ordinance, which we can certainly work with you on and figure out what's right for Highland Park. So, there it is. I have bags for everybody. I want people to take the bags, and I want them to use it because the logo itself tells you, this is our campaign, this is what we want, this is what our town is behind. So I'm going to leave them here, and you do your meeting, the rest of your meeting. And, you know, I hope that we'll work together as the second half of the grant goes on, and that it will be, you know, kind of have the impact that we want it to have.
Mayor, on behalf of council, I'd like to thank Tina for, and convey my thanks to the Sustainable Highland Park. I know at all the meetings, and even during the subcommittee meetings and working on weekends and during the evenings, it's been very hard work, you put a lot of work into the program. We're slowly but surely seeing some inroads in the next part of the program with more penetration into the stores and more presence again in the stores. I think we'll alert more and more people, and I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Mayor, if I could, I just want, as the liaison to the Community Food Pantry, they adopted the spirit of reusable bags swiftly, and we just met last week, and they're just ecstatic about it. Their clients are on board, and they just really went all out, so it's, yeah, it's working.
Okay. So what I'm going to ask you to do is if these bags are extra, Teri, somebody take them into the office now.
Sure. Thank you.
Also, I just want to add that this past summer, I was in California, and I walked into the store, and you had to purchase your bag if you didn't have one. And so every time you needed a bag, and most people came in, and it was the person from New Jersey that was buying the bag, every time, because we're so conditioned to buy the bag, but most people walk in, and they already have their totes all rolled up, and they pull them out, and they bag, and they go. So I said to the girl, how, you know, how often did she say, they don't sell plastic bags that often?
Right, right.
So I guess once the condition starts to happen, then people get into a habit of not doing that.
Talking about a fee, I don't know if it's an actual ban of plastic bags, but it's a charge if you're going to buy plastic, or some states, you can't buy plastic, but you can buy another bag if you don't bring yourself. That's what's on the table.
Right. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? So just step up after Mr. Gross. Please state your name and address.
My name is Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. This evening, ladies and gentlemen, I have been instructed by the Veterans of Foreign Wars to extend the courtesy to every member of the council. This evening, I would like to show for the camera, the Veterans of Foreign Wars just released this book, and I got the copy, it was Friday, this past Friday. If I may, just for a moment, this book has the veterans of New Jersey, and to the council members, I'm going to give this book to, and I would like you to pass it along to each one. In it, you'll find, no doubt in my mind, members of your family, loved ones, brothers, sisters, husbands, neighbors, friends. The index of names is in the rear of the book to help you out, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And to anyone that's in attendance here tonight, if you would like to look at this book after the council members look at it, I'll be glad to stay here after the meeting, and you can look in this book also. This is, they say that this is the first edition, and the second edition is being worked on now. So I would like... So I would like to give this book right now to the first council member and after she looks at it, would you please pass it along?
Absolutely.
The names, the names of all your loved ones, as I said before, all the names are in the back and you can look through it.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
It's very beautiful. It says, "New Jersey Veterans of Foreign Wars, 2017, Then and Now Publication." And it's personally addressed to Mr. Gross. And there's some really beautiful pictures. It has the mission, the vision, and the core values of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. And all the branches are mentioned here.
And as I said before, to all the council members, all your family, your loved ones, all the names are in here. And if you look in the back of the book, the names are there. It'll help you out a little quicker.
I see it.
But please pass it along to, and I want to make sure that I can report to the VFW that every member of the council had a chance to look at this book and draw their own conclusion.
Are you in here, Mr. Gross?
Yeah, I forgot the page.
You shouldn't have forgotten that page.
You can check in.
Oh, good.
Since you asked that question, I'm the only one from Middlesex County in here.
Really?
Wow. Wow. This is really nice.
This is the first time that the VFW ever published a book like this. And the VFW is publishing the same book for every state in the United States. But this one is concerning strictly New Jersey.
And Mr. Gross, if we wanted to purchase one of those books, how would we purchase one?
I beg your pardon?
If we wanted to purchase one of those books, how would we purchase one?
Since you asked that question, Madam Mayor, in the rear of the book is a address and a telephone number. And I have another phone number, a quicker phone number. If anybody wanted to order this book, they can do so.
Okay.
And as I read it, on the back cover is the phone number and address, if anybody wanted to purchase this book.
Okay. Thank you. So Councilwoman Foster Dublin will look.
And I do see Mr. Gross is here. I found him. And it says, Gross, Herb, Sergeant John Nielsen Post, Highland Park, New Jersey. So we're prominently displayed in the book.
That's right.
I'll pass it along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Gross.
And we'll get it back, we'll get it back to you when it works its way around.
As I said before, make sure that every, every member of the council gets a chance to look at this and possibly they'll find names in there from their family or friends. And if anybody wanted to purchase this book, the address is on the back cover and the phone number is there also.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And if anybody in attendance would like to see this book after the council members see it, after the meeting, I'd be glad to show it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thanks for sharing.
Please state your name and address.
I, Regis Methman, 242 South Sixth Avenue. I don't have to tell anyone in here that Highland Park has parking issues, right? I'm just, but I'm talking just in general in this area, our little highly-densed area with apartments here, apartments here and, you know. I see on the side, on this side of the street, there's the parking, if we were to put lines, parking designated lines for parking spaces, we'd probably pick up about 14 spaces between Borough Hall and the end of the block. And I have spoken with Lieutenant Penechella about maybe one additional handicap sign on the street, which could serve us either, you know, crime in building or across the street or any handicapped individual. We have parking issues in town. I know they can't be solved overnight. And I think if on Sixth Avenue and even Fifth Avenue, where I see the school has already done so, if we paint a designated line this way, people don't hog spaces, you know, you're parking too close to my car, you know, and that's an issue. You know, that, we have a lot of people in town and, you know, parking is an issue. And I'd just like the borough to take into consideration, maybe if we put some lines out there. And most of all, the fire hydrants in this town have no yellow painting near them. People are parking near them consistently. I see it all the time. If the chief will give me a ticket, look, I'll take care of it.
Okay, we're on deputizing.
It's just some of the, it's just some of the things that, you know, I think the borough should look at because we do have a parking issue and it's not getting any better and it's not going to get any better until we do something about it.
So first I have to ask you, weren't you recently, didn't I recently appoint you to the board?
Yes, to the board, yes.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to ask the chief to, to talk with Public Works and see if there's something we can work out to help that situation and...
If, I mean, Mayor, we were circulating in connection with public safety, the chief also, the question of marking hydrants, marking the, the yellow markers for the, for the corners.
Right.
It grew up around that and also we'll add the parking spaces to that as well.
I see that we could gain spaces if they were designated, because I can go out there right now and see, probably fit a nice compact car in the spot, but, you know.
Is that an offer to pay the engineer to mark them out?
Well, I've been in the maintenance and construction industry for many, many years. I'll do it myself. Thank you.
Okay. We'll look into that for you. Thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I, like you said, I served with Mr. Methman. He's the resident advisor, he's the resident commissioner on the, on the Highland Park Housing Authority Commission and knows the area well. This, this came up last week at our, at our, at our housing authority meeting, as Borough Administrator Hovare is aware of. So, so we are looking into, to these issues, but it is, it is a problem and really appreciate your coming out and letting, letting people know.
We have the public discussion. All right, seeing none. Clerk, would you report on advertising the capital ordinance of North Third Avenue for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to North Third Avenue in the Borough of Highland Park appropriating $262,000 to pay for the cost was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing? Resolution to adopt and reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? Motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to table number 12, oh, I'm sorry, 11. Okay. Clerk, could you report on introduction of capital ordinance for various fencing projects for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for various fencing projects in the Borough of Highland Park appropriating $17,327 to pay the cost has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Also moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd just like the public to know, this fencing project is a small project, but we got a very good price through the state contracts, which are already approved. The fencing is for the fencing, a more permanent fencing around the Bee Hives at the Environmental Center, along with some fencing along the trails, a small fence at the, at the library and also at the, at the Borough's portion of the Habitat for Humanity housing. We got a very good price on the fencing and I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Now, clerk, may I have a motion to table number 12, the massage therapist ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to separate number 17 from the consent agenda?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following items on the consent agenda? Number 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
If I can just explain what number 19 is?
Okay.
There. Again, more great redevelopment news. Our Rehabilitation Screening Committee and our Redevelopment Agency have been working very closely with the developer Anton Popov on Rowerton Avenue to redevelop and enlarge his property for mixed-use retail and residential. I'm delighted to forward this redevelopment amendment for Mr. Popov's property and move it over to the Planning Board for their review. So...
Roll call.
Yes.
There's a motion.
There's a motion, so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
May I have, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1017319, Resolution to authorize the execution of internship agreement with Rutgers School of Social Work?
Yes, motion, but I want to explain what this is. A couple of weeks ago, we approved for our 12th center to be constructed. And with that, we are now looking into internship from the School of Social Work to help us plan the programming and to help us develop what type of programming that we want to see in place. So with that, I wholeheartedly say yes.
That's a motion. Second.
Did I get a second?
No.
Matt, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes, and just to clarify for the public, the reason this is removed from consent is just to clarify some of the technicalities with the contract. And I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Our second session of open public discussion, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
No, that's the, that's the one that was in Borough.
Oh.
This is one.
Oh, so you found it. There you go. See, good thing you came up to the mic.
Russ Picard, 307 Magnolia. First of all, I would like to say, whoever is in charge of the power on these microphones, I can hardly hear you back there, even when you speak into those. Is there a way for you to adjust the volume on these microphones? I can hear you better if I turn, happen, if I play with my television set, sometimes I hit this.
Right. I, I believe we've heard that comment before, especially from people who try to watch us on television. So Borough...
I'll look into that. I don't know how the equipment works, but we can find out.
That would be helpful. Coming to the, the plastic bags, I know I hate plastic. My tenants love it. But what do you do with garbage bags? This lady has left, unfortunately. What are they going to use for that? Put our loose garbage into the containers and they're going to dump it that way?
Borough Administrator, did you want to respond?
As I was involved with the design of the grant, I haven't, they're focused solely on single-use shopping bags for the, for the initiative. So they're not targeting garbage bags at this time. What I can tell you is I know they do make compostable bags, but they are not, you know, but that's, that is an option if people want to look into that.
Because my tenants create garbage. Yeah.
You may want to suggest to them, when they're helping with the removal of the leaves, they can at DPW get a leaf bag that is biodegradable. Everybody okay?
We were doing, we were doing some vermin removal. I think the fly is now done. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what was said.
So if, if your, if your tenants or anybody else is going to be raking leaves, our DPW does have biodegradable leaf bags available.
That I provide for.
Okay.
The Borough plants the trees, but they don't maintain the ones that are on the streets. And then as the trees get a little older, like the one they planted on my property, which I didn't want and didn't ask for, but now there are little shoots coming out along. Who is responsible for that? I had my lawn people trim it away on my tree, but I see them all over.
Councilman George, would you like to address that?
The, the Borough plants trees in accordance with the tree replacement plan, which is designed every year. I know that some people say, well, I didn't want the tree and some people say, I did want a tree and I haven't gotten one. And we're trying to coordinate that a lot better. With regard to maintenance on them, it is the homeowner's responsibility to water them when they request that they're put in. The Borough's arborist and DPW try to, to do some of the maintenance and obviously in the fully grown mature trees, we do the maintenance on the ones that are in the verge. That's not the ones that are in your own yard. And basically, it's between the curb and the sidewalk, the Borough maintains the trees. The homeowner waters them when you get the new ones and until, until they're planted in. And the Borough tries to, to trim them when, as necessary. Some have been removed because they were, they were either dead or they weren't growing proper, properly. But again, it's a lot of work for DPW to get everywhere all the time. We don't have a full-time dedicated arborist, you know, we catch as catch can when we get the reports.
Just asking.
I just, I might add, for you and also the public, we have the Recycle Coach app, which now includes the ability to punch in a notification on your smartphone to say, hey, there's a tree branch hanging in front of 103 Magnolia or, you know, the tree in front of my house looks dead or, when are you going to plant my, you know, would you plant a tree in front of my house? So that, that is available, that's not just for recycling, that's available for DPW to monitor that as well.
Well, I took care of the tree when I realized that it was going to be mine. I actually fed it for three years to get the roots deep down.
Well, thank you for that.
It's a nice little tree. I like it, but I just didn't think I'd want it on the sidewalk. I like it in my backyard. No, sidewalk repair. One of you council members walked across with me on Third and Magnolia. Winter is coming. Somebody is going to get hurt. This is nothing what, blotches of the blotch of the blotch, of more repair stuff put on top. It's not smooth. I can't walk there. I have to walk either to the right to cross the street where it's a smooth street or cross over by the church going down towards the park. And it's getting worse all the time. And all they come and do is put another pile of, of black tar on it.
Is the street, are you talking about the street or the sidewalk?
No, I'm talking about the street.
Okay.
Now, the sidewalk is another whole issue. But I won't take up your time. I want to go home and watch something on television.
The Yankee game?
No, Dr. Phil.
Borough Administrator, do you want to make a note of that, Third and Magnolia?
I guess, we can, yeah, that's probably sufficient.
Don't forget. No, you'll have to. No, you'll have two.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to conference meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.